Thank you all for joining us tonight. The meeting's ordered at 6:36. We'll start out with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And are there any adjustments or amendments to the agenda?
Recording in progress.
I would leave you taking up over your seat. Table 8.
Table 7?
Table 7 on the updated, the updated one for Police Advisory Board.
So we have a motion to table number 7 regarding an appointment for the Police Advisory Board. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we'll table that to our next, possibly our next meeting. All right, we'll move to public comment. Anyone on Zoom or in the audience that would like to make a comment regarding any matter that is not on the agenda and is within the council's purpose.
We have one hand up on Zoom.
Okay. Ryer, you have a comment?
Yeah, thanks. So I wanted to thank the city for the banners that were put up in June over Main Street, both the Juneteenth one and the Pride one. It was just really great to see. I heard a lot of really positive feedback from it. A lot of people were really excited to see that and happy to see it. So I just wanted to thank the city for that. Also, I was hoping to say this at the Police Advisory Board meeting, but there wasn't one this month, but I did have a great, a great opportunity to speak with Sergeant Wetherby. I think that's his rank. And it was just, it was a really nice conversation I had with him. He's very professional and at the same time compassionate. And I just, I think that's the kind of, you know, policing that really bolsters confidence in the institution of police in our community. So I just want to really, I wanted to do that at Police Advisory Board, but since there wasn't one, I didn't want to let too much time, oh, did I freeze? I just didn't want to let too much time go through, go past between that. So, so thank you for the banners and just a big kudos to Sergeant Wetherby for, you know, being a great police officer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryer. I appreciate that. And I would echo the, I think we're very fortunate that Jason Wetherby is one of our officers, as with any other person. So, thank you for that. Any other comments? Seeing done, we're going to move on to item number four. We will recess to go into the liquor control.
Motion.
Second. We have a motion by Tim, seconded by Chad. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, hearing none, we'll move into liquor control. Who will, will you be covering that now? In absence of a...
I have the forms.
Chip.
Chip will cover it. Okay, Chip, we'll turn it over to you then. We have basically two requests, two new applications. One for Off the Rails and one Fed, which is on Federal Street, soon open later this summer. And then we also have one for a second class license from Norwich, Delta, Tessen, and Baker.
Norwich was last month, but they're just going for their second. Their second class, just making ship one.
That's all it is, is shipping, not, I'm saying?
They already got, we approved them last, last meeting. Chip, are these guys getting, they're going through the police department still, right? They're getting, they're going through the process of being investigated by PD?
I think Dom's not in there.
Yeah, I always saw.
Okay.
We can find out.
Just quickly, I mean, any new one is investigated, right? It's not, we're not saying just that?
No, yeah, yeah.
Everyone, some people.
Yeah, I forgot to ask that last meeting. I thought about it when I left. But I, we were usually having a police report on the applications, and we're not seeing that anymore. So, and I thought there might have been privacy issues with that because these things were, these, this is all published on the website, right? Everything that we receive is as a package.
I believe the council packets are still on, with the agenda, yeah. We can find out. You know, it might be something that Curry was putting in the packet, but with her being on, I figured we'll get an answer on that.
It's not that it's, you know, I'm demanding it, I'm just wondering if that process has changed.
Right. No, I don't believe we can do a process.
Okay.
If that, yeah, we'll follow the whole process.
I'll make a motion to approve Off the Rails and one Federal for first and third class licenses and outside consumption permit. Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Mike for, to approve first and third class license and outside consumption for Off the Rails restaurant. Anyone have any further questions or comments?
Nice to see something there again.
Yep. Except, I'll say it. I'll wait till later. Motion to approve Norwich for their second class.
All of you get, all those in favor of the motion for Off the Rails, say aye.
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 Any opposed, hearing none, Off the Rails license approved. Moving on to being Norwich, Delta, Tessen, and Baker.
Motion to approve it, it's presented.
Second. A motion from Tim, seconded by Chad, to approve the second class license and retail delivery permit for Norwich. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, hearing none, the Norwich second class license and delivery permit are approved as well. Let's go back into...
Other business?
Oh, sorry about that. Yep, any other business?
I made a comment last week that the regulations were murky as far as the requirement for grand shop. And that was misplaced because I went back to regulations. And it was the general liability policy. Part of the general liability policy of a million and a grand shop of 500,000. And that's what our rates required, so I missed over the last meeting. So, just thought I'd correct that.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything under other business for liquor control? Coming around is permits for signatures, so if you could sign those.
Motion to adjourn out of liquor control and move back to agenda.
Second. Motion by Tim, seconded by Chad, move out of liquor control meeting and back into the council board, into that agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, hearing none, we are now back into the council meeting. Moving on to item number five, which is considered the approval of extra territorial allocation application for St. Almond's BTS retail. Have anyone here to represent that, because that would be the case?
I'd like to say that I'm sorry that we're having to lose some green fields to a dollar store. I don't think we need another dollar store, but just throw that out there. It's been farmland all our lives that we've lived here, up there in, everyone knows what we're talking about, right? Across the maple fields.
Yeah.
So, but I guess in today's world, money talks and what's best for the people walks, so.
Yeah, I'm deep into it. I'm going to comment exactly the same. Dollar stores are running rampant across the country and I would say not always in the best of locations. You know, that seems to be something that would be more ideal in a city setting than a green field.
Don't keep me, there are already two dollar stores in every city, one in deep direct.
I was commenting outside in competition, location wise, I think it makes sense to have.
It's gonna be hard to swallow that, seeing, coming down that intersection, random even that term. See, and see now sitting there, buddy.
It's, it's hard to believe that the state is not going to make some kind of improvement on the intersection. It's gonna be crazy.
Well, then ultimately around about.
Yeah, before the store develops.
Dom, do you want to add anything?
No, I think it's fairly straightforward.
Let's be mindful of the allocation review criteria.
Yeah, that's right. I just always, I said, I was just commenting. I didn't say I was, you know, looking to deny anything, but I'll either make the motion to approve the, the extra territorial allocation application, as presented.
Second?
I'll second it. Motion with a comment.
Comment to the second, motion by Tim, seconded by Chad. Open up, well, yeah, we'll open up for comment.
My own comment is the answers to the questions were extremely brief, a sentence on each one. So, you know, we're talking, it was fairly important and it looks like they spent 45 seconds responding to those 10 questions.
That was Pete, right? Was it Pete that did that? They, Treehouse Consulting, did you mean? Oh, no, so it's not, so it's not Pete.
Any other comments?
I guess to build on that, I mean, one of the criteria about, the criteria on, about the not resulting in relocation, employment opportunities, or economic activity, I mean, they're saying there won't be any, but the reality is if you have that, that retail activity going out by the interstate, then it's not happening in downtowns. I, you know, I think that that's, it's hard to quantify that. And I can understand that people could make competing assertions there, but this is just the wrong kind of development to be happening out there if there's going to be development. It really is. And it's not our place, to your point, it's not our place here with a wider allocation consideration to, but man, it is hard to vote to help to move a Dollar General out there forward, just.
Just a tidbit of information, I think I had heard where a Dollar General would be constructing 1,100 new stores within, across the US in the next year. Just to give you an indication of the growth. Okay, any other comments on this? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving this application, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, hearing none, the application for this agreement has been approved. We'll move on to the second one. So...
Handy property.
The handy property. And this one, more for an allocation, it's not the extra territorial allocation, it's just approval of water and sewer for city property. Something like that, Andy.
Just for disclosure to everybody, I've done a couple of things for Grand Butterfield, I've done a couple of things for Chris Wood Midas. I specifically did not, was not involved in this when they asked me to do it, just because of my sitting on the council. So does anyone think I have an issue with those past observations, past recommendations opposed to any of this?
I'm good.
I do not have an issue with that. Okay. So we have an application before us for a water allocation for 191 Lake Street. Is there, can I entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Chad, seconded by Tim, for approval of 194 gallons.
Tim, let's just enter into the record that box is checked incorrectly for non-city property, that it is in fact a city property. The council will be reviewing, has a city property. They have a term involved, I would ask.
Yeah, that's right. I'm sure they have one.
If you consider that a scrivener's error and have that administratively modified?
Thank you for that, Dom. So...
I'll amend my, I'll amend my motion to include that.
Same.
Okay, we have a draw. Right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition, hearing none, the allocation application for the handy property on Lake Street has been approved by the council. We table item number seven, we're moving to item number eight, which is continuing emergency ordinance for a four-way, federal and lower, Chip, I'll turn that one to you, I believe.
Yeah, bringing forward the same emergency ordinance that we've brought the past couple months. The four-way stop seems to be working well as far as four-way stops go. And we're really sort of doing this in order to be able to maintain it as we prepare a permanent ordinance change for the four-way stop, which is the next agenda item.
So I was gonna ask, if we keep doing the emergency law, why would we just change it? Move to approve the emergency ordinance before we stop at federal, I'm going to move.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Anyone have any comments relative to that?
I just, I just have a question. Is that considered a state route as well?
It's a class two road, it's a class one road, because it is a state route, but it's a city, city-owned, city-owned and managed. It's a numbered route, but it's class one, which means it has control of it.
Okay, we have a motion to second to approve the emergency ordinance for the four-way stop. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, hearing none, the four-way emergency ordinance has passed. We're moving on to number nine, first reading of amendment for the four-way stop.
The preparative amendments, you've added to the list of four-way stops in the city and the city ordinances. This is the first reading. Providing you accept this, we would bring it to you next month for a second meeting and to make it permanent.
Move to, move to approve the first reading of the ordinance amendment.
Second.
For the four-way stop.
Second.
A motion from Chad, seconded by Mike, to create an ordinance for the four-way stop.
Do we usually make a, do we usually vote on first reading?
It's run, the charter says it has to be accepted by the city council, doesn't really say what that means.
No, okay.
So, I mean, it could be everything from all seven, if you nod at your heads, to actual motion. But it's good direction for staff to move it forward and warn it for the second meeting.
Do we all think we need a four-way stop there, what, when it's finished?
I think we will, because not only has it made the intersection safer for that crosswalk at the end of federal, but I think we'll probably eventually have to put a crosswalk at Newton to cross to the new Fonda property. And then there's going to be the dispatch center in the back of Fonda providing some additional traffic, but over time, as the city, you know, we really want to fully redevelop Fonda and have it all sold, so we expect there to be more traffic at that intersection.
And the way we're going to resolve that issue is by putting a four-way stop there and no other type of traffic pattern device?
Probably gonna be Signal.
Someday. There is an ultimate plan to Signal, like, that's one of the large pieces of the federal street plan, which, you know, we've been constantly searching for funding for, we're building as we can. But at the same time, we did have a Signal slated for Lake and Federal and Catherine, which not only would have been expensive, but geographically we had huge issues. We found out a four-way stop did the job there, so, you know, I think there is a Signal long-term that we could put at Lower Newton and Federal, but if we find this four-way stop is working, we might be able to stick with it.
I've, I've seen a number of cars blow by there, but it's a four-way stop and you could probably say that about all of four-way stops.
Yeah.
But there is traffic backup coming in from North Main Street going down Newton Street. There is traffic backup there.
In the AM.
Yeah, and there is, does everyone know at the top of, almost to the top of Newton Street, that there is an entrance to a complex of, it's a driveway?
Yeah.
And is everyone aware of that?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's, I don't know if we can do something for that later on, but that seems to be a big problem with this setup that you have here as well. We watched, Lori and I watched a car trying to get out of there, trying to negotiate its way out of that, and it wasn't able to do it. Two, two down.
On the right.
Right. Actually, one down.
The first one.
Yeah.
If you're trying to go out, there's, it's important.
It services all those properties on North Main. Yeah. Yeah, so, I guess, I guess I'm not in favor of the stop sign because of, not, not because of just that issue, but because it does congest that portion of Newton, Lower Newton. And I'm not sure that, because I don't know what type of traffic Fonda's gonna generate, if this is the best solution for that.
What time have you been seeing that, Tim?
Between 7:00 and 8:30, and this is during this time, when school's not in session, 3:30 to 6 o'clock, 3:30 to 5:30 maybe. So...
It does help getting off Federal Street.
It really, yeah, it really does, but it really backs up when there is no, are no cars there. And there's no mechanism to let those cars keep going because everyone's gotta stop. And so, and there's a lot of times when there's a lot of traffic coming down from North Main Street and there's no, there's no traffic going, coming up Lower Newton Road, and no reason for anyone there to stop, but all cars coming off North Main Street going down Lower Newton are all stopping. And so, I don't know.
How is that different than Lake and Federal? Why doesn't it happen there?
Probably the truck traffic. Probably the truck traffic.
Well, sometimes it does happen at Lake and Federal, and there's a train blocking the, a long train. I've seen them back way up onto Main Street, both ways, nobody can move.
You're absolutely right, but I also think the trucks have learned now.
Yes.
Going up, so there's not much going up Lake Street now. They're all either going down Marke Street or they're, they're not supposed to be, but they are going down Catherine Street, even though there's a sign there now. But I just think that, that is, that's one of the arteries to get out instead of going down Main Street. That's one of the arteries for people to go down and get outside of the city, go down to the lower parts of the city, or negotiate or navigate over to the south side of the city without having to go down Main Street. And that is a recipe for a lot of traffic. And a stop sign there, just, I just don't think, you know, works, but maybe I'm wrong. I don't know. You haven't noticed anything, Tim?
I was just about to say, I, I traveled quite a bit between sports and school, and I thought it's been working pretty well. I, I heard a few days early on, when it first started, that it was backed up Newton towards Main, but I haven't seen that, I haven't seen that.
There are times, I'm on that road constantly, 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 constantly on this corridor, this, this whole section of the city, on, on a daily basis. And there are times when that thing works slick, but there's a lot of times when it doesn't.
But I do agree with, I mean, turning down there, off from, off from Main, saves a lot of time from hitting the shopping center light, the Lake Street light.
When I'm coming from the north side of the city and I want to go to my office, I'm not going down Main Street. I'm going right down Newton Street and then Lower Newton and over Federal. It's the fastest journey for me, no stop signs, no traffic lights, nothing. Well, there is a stop sign now. So, but anyway, I mean, I mean, like I said, there's been times when it's been, worked great, and, and, but I, you know, and I think it works now because of the traffic, the big trucks and stuff going in there. And I can, I can see the need for it now, or the better need for it as, as time goes on, but to have it there permanently, you know, I, I, because I just don't know what type of traffic's gonna be generated by what we're proposing for the new facilities there. How much traffic will that indeed generate? I don't know. And we, and that's easily taken care of because we could tell them, just don't go up Newton Road, Newton Street, go straight onto Federal or go down if we wanted to make that, that traffic flowing out of that site.
But I encourage people to take a look before the next meeting, right?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, you know, that's my reason for just talking about it, so that people, we then, when you brought up, it looked like we were gonna try and prove it tonight, and I wanted people to go look at it for a little while, investigate it. You know, I ignore those times of the day, and don't forget, there's no school yet, there's no school yet, so there's no busing going up and down there yet, so.
My question on that is, if you're coming up Lower Newton and you're turning right onto Federal, that crosswalk area is pretty expansive. Is there plans to tighten that up a little bit?
Maybe a little bit, but it's always been wide because of the truck pressure.
Trucks went way out.
Way, way out, yeah.
So even, you know, even the plans to improve the corridor are still taking into account those truck turning movements.
The trucks are only coming from six or seven?
It needs to plan for, it, it needs to plan for trucks coming from both sides of Lower Newton. And one, and it's not just wide for the trucks that are turning right off of Lower Newton onto Federal, it's wide for the trucks that are coming off Lower Newton and then turning left, because they can swing wide around and use the whole, use the whole radius as well, the whole width of the street.
And, and don't limit yourself to trucks, Tim, as we all think of it when we hear the word truck. Think of contractors' vehicles with trailers on the back of them, or the contractor's trucks with great big pieces of wood. I mean, six or seven generates a lot of traffic. A lot of people go there, and I'm, and I'm very, I'm, I'm glad they, they do that, but I just think traffic's tough because of that. And, yeah, I think that corner works, you know, being wide, I don't think you can cut that far.
And the reason I ask, it's just tricky for kids going to school. It's a longer crosswalk that you really have to...
I agree.
You really have to judge that.
Absolutely.
Even how time it takes a kid to get across there, but.
Okay, so, for now, we have, I'm quite sure we have a motion and a second to approve the first reading, just to give staff some indication. With that, we would ask that everyone sort of take some time and evaluate that at different times of the day and see, see what we think, and we can discuss it further at the next meeting. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, hearing none, first reading passes, or just give you that nod of the head, Chip, if you will. Okay. The next item with the facade grant for Salon Elixir. You know, I was late addition to your packet.
I have something to hand out on that, too.
Salon Elixir for those is a new business that has located on the upper part of Lake Street, not far from Red House Suites and Metropolis.
This is, it's the design, but also has the installer's quote on the back. The quote actually came in a little lower than we thought it would, so that, that's another update for tonight. If I'm not mistaken, Miguel's has been vacant ever since they closed. And, you know, the significance of that is we have a woman who's moving her business from Swan to downtown, she wants to be part of what's going on here. She's occupying part of a building that's been vacant, an important block on Lake Street. It's been vacant for a long time, and she also has plans to eventually use up the entire space and have the whole storefront being utilized. So we think this is, this is one of those cases where it's an important business that should benefit from a city facade grant. So the recommendation is to use the facade grant monies for the signage as depicted at this storefront, go 50/50. So the updated quote is for $4,950, which means the city's portion would be $2,475.
That's just signage, Chip, not painting.
Yeah, we're just going with the signage on this one. We're, we're willing to work with this business owner on being more involved, we saw it on the other half of the storefront, you know, let's see what that looks like, and we'll talk to her about that. Then we can come back before you, with that.
And so that business owner is Keith, right?
The land, the property owner's Keith, Chris Keith, the business owner's Jessica Bruce Keith, the business owner is Jessica Culp.
Yeah. And would, should, should it be Keith making that application?
We've been using more staff-directed approach to these, and normally we, we will work with the business owner and contact the property owner and pull it together, look at the designs. We've typically been the one bringing this before the city council for the past several, the several minutes.
And is it al, is it always, uh, just from my information, is it always fifty-fifty? Or, or have there been times?
There have been times when we've gotten more, we actually went a little more for Project Vermont, because they were putting in a very unique sign that we wanted to see kind of in action. But typically, we start at fifty-fifty, and we try to keep it at fifty-fifty as much as we can.
Did I, I did read where, um, the owner has interest on moving next door as well.
Yeah.
And what, is there a timeframe on that?
I don't have a timeframe yet.
Be good, good addition. That part of Lake Street.
Okay, we have your proposal in front of you for a facade grant, uh, for Salon Elixir. Anyone else have any other questions for Chip? If not, I would undertake the motion to approve, uh, the grant as presented.
Second.
Motion by Chad, seconded by Mike. Any other questions for Chip or comments? Carrying on, all those in favor of approving the facade grant, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Carrying on, the facade grant is approved. Thank you, Chip.
Thank you.
We have with us, uh, Kelly Vienz. Kelly, would you like to come up to the table? You're on for agenda item number eleven to, um, give us, um, an update on the pool activity. I, we don't need all the specifics, but, um.
Yeah, it's been great. It's been open since June twentieth. Um, started that day with full, uh, full docket. Um, lap swim in the morning from five-thirty to seven AM for adults. Swim team from seven to ten AM. Lessons from ten AM to twelve. Public swim, twelve-thirty to five. Uh, swim lessons, five-thirty to seven, and public swim, seven to eight-thirty. So, it's been like all on from day one, and it's been, um, we've had great weekends packed, like with five hundred people on a, on a nice hot Saturday and Sunday, so it's been terrific.
Do you have numbers for, uh, membership sales?
I do, um.
Can you share those?
We have, right now, we have a hundred and twenty-seven membership, family memberships, that have three hundred and eighty-nine members. Um, in the past, um, if we hit sixty of all the different kinds of memberships, senior, family, and individual, we were, that was, we were settled. That was, that was something. So, we're at one twenty-seven family memberships, eighteen individual, and twenty-six senior memberships. Um, so that's, um, that's great. We've got a lot of adults, um, really interested in either just adult lap swim or, um, fitness programming. And in the adult fitness programming, we have Tai Chi, aquatic yoga, Aqua Fit, and Aqua Jogging right now. Um, and we're talking to some other, um, we're lucky because we have some great instructors seeking us out because of the pool, and it's got perfect, four feet is perfect for our fitness classes, and we have a ton of four-foot high, um, water, so that's great for that. Um, we're doing birthday parties, we had three birthday parties last weekend, a company party, um. We've got, uh, we've just got a ton of interest, so we're, we're, it's, we're just a hundred miles an hour, um, full. We have, um, for cash sales coming in the door from June twenty to today was seventeen thousand dollars, and that's people just paying at the door, um, which is, uh, a lot.
How's that, how's that compared to the old pool?
The old pool, we were always happy if we hit six grand for the year. So, so.
Some more.
You know, and some years were great, and, and it was wicked hot, and, uh, and, and, you know, long summer, and sometimes we'd hit eight, but six, six was a pretty, you know, we were satisfied with a six thousand dollar entry. Um, and that's not, that's not including membership sales, which are separate. Um, that's just people walking in the door. And we're finding we have people from New York, Ridgeford, Titting County, Fairfax, that we have, I mean, literally everywhere. Um, and they're coming for the day, you know, they show up at twelve-thirty and they stay until five. And it's, I think the difference there is, you know, at the old pool, it was a drop-off. People would pull up, drop their kid, and take off. This, we're finding like the whole family's coming because it's a nice, it's a nice place to be, you know. It's, um, not that our old pool wasn't, but this is just much more comfortable for people who are not in the water. Maybe they're sitting on the side of the zero entry. Um, we have, we, if we had four infant or toddlers in the pool at one time at the old pool, that was a lot. Now, there are probably thirty or forty little, little kids all the time in the, in the zero entry and playing under the, the water mushroom and stuff, so it's, um, it's nice. And then the parents are sitting on the side of the pool, and they're with their kids, and they're watching them, and.
I want to take the opportunity to, um, promote that it is heated, uh.
And that was a lifesaver at the very beginning in June, because we had some cold days, and I would drive in in the morning and you could see the steam coming out. So, swim team, kids weren't crying this, this June, but, um, yeah.
So, just I'm curious, if a family were to unload and go in for the day, could a parent leave and go like the trails on the hill and come back?
Yeah.
With no problem?
Yeah.
It could make for a, a full recreation day.
Yeah, and in fact, we have a lot of parents who drop their kids off for swim lessons. I was just up there now, and there's evening lessons, they're dropping their kid off and they're going for a walk, you know, just the lessons, but they can do that in the afternoon, too. And we've, now that it's, it's just so much busier, we give them little, um, paper bracelets if we think we're gonna, uh, you know.
With travel.
Yeah.
And swim team numbers are up as well?
Biggest team ever, we have a hundred and fifty kids.
Are you responsible for the Great Ground Lodge also, and so how does that come in?
Great, we, um, we had a wedding there this weekend, um, it's gorgeous. Uh, we had, uh, NMC's company picnic, um, yesterday. Um, it's booked every weekend, you know, for private rentals, pretty much through October. Um, we have a Burlington Rugby Tournament this weekend, and that's, that's a regional, uh, people from all over New England will be coming to that. Um, so it's, 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 uh, you know, the, the lodge is great, and, and our day camp is there, and we have a hundred and five kids there, or a hundred and ten kids there every day, Monday through Friday for camp. And they, um, you know, they play games, do art, have their lunch, go for a hike, and then spend the afternoon at the pool. So, this, this walk to the pool, we get no complaints down across the field, um, instead of across town.
Day camp's sold out?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
For the whole summer?
Yeah.
Kelly, first, uh, it's been awesome having Molly up at day camp a couple of days a week here and there. Kind of a crazy summer schedule, and you're, the staff that you have there is all really great and wonderful with the kids, so thank you. Um, I also just wanted to ask what the split has been like between city residents and folks a little outside the city?
So, for, um, memberships, we have two hundred and twenty-four city, uh, uh, members, uh, in, in family memberships. We have a hundred and twenty of town, uh, members. Um, so it looks, it looks about half, you know, as far as, um, memberships go. We have a new square system, and for every reason, we're trying to pull that out, the, the report for that, you know, who's who coming in, we know what the dollars are, uh, and we know what the category is, but we can't, we're, uh, we just gotta get, uh, I don't know, we have, we have to call customer support because we can't. I, I was trying feverishly today to get that out, and I can't.
Do you have any questions for Kelly?
We're hooked to town in Georgia because they have a special.
Right, so Georgia, we only have five, um, memberships from Georgia, but we have a lot of people who just come to the, you know, just pay as they go, come to the gate. Um, and we've been, actually, today we started, you know, we used to do the free lunches at the pool. We started today at Houghton with the, the free lunches. Um, we only had a handful of kids, but, you know, usually that kind of thing, um, picks up. And we have been driving the, the van for two trips a day, every day. We've only had one rider once, so we're, we're, uh, but we're still seeing, because we know our kids, um, from the old pool. We're seeing them there, but we're seeing them with their families, and we never, we never saw that at the old pool. The whole family's coming up, um, and hanging out at the pool.
Any adults, Marie, Joel, any questions?
Good to see you going, Joel.
And I dislike the year-round factor with that pool. I mean, this is something that can continue on all year.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Uh, Marie, can you just elaborate on, um, memberships, how they're seasonal and how that's.
So, this first membership goes, went from June twentieth, and it will go to August thirty-first. Because we did get energy quotes, um, you know, but it was kind of before the world went crazy. So, we're doing three-month chunks to make sure we're on point, um, uh, with those costs. So, the, the, the membership in the winter will be slightly higher than the membership in the summer. Um, we're gonna close on September twelfth for one week, and we have to remove a lot of the, the, um, features and diving board, the mushroom, uh, the pole, stuff like that, that, so that then they can lay the, the dome down and then inflate it. So, we'll be closed for about a week, and then we'll open up, and a new membership will go October first to December thirty-first. We'll see if we're on the right course, and then we'll have another membership for January through probably the end of March, and then one until the dome comes up. I think after we get one full year under our belt, um, then we can, we can tell, you know, we can sell year-long memberships and do like a monthly, uh, we have the ability to do auto-pay. So, if you want to sign up and pay so much a month, and, um, but we just want to be sure first.
Uh, come September, you expect to continue on with all the course offerings that you?
Yeah, we're, I've been working with Isaac Bashaw to put together, um, our schedule for when the dome is on. And we already have, you know, it used to be, our, our lessons are almost completely full for summer. But it used to be, you know, get a quick, you know, we got eight weeks to do it, and now it's like, people go, oh, that's right, I can take these in September, or I can take this in October, too, like we can keep going through the winter. Um, and we're working on like a, you know, a, a little family, little toddler thing, uh, in the mornings. We have had a few adults who don't think there's enough just adult time. Um, and we've added it whenever we can, but I kind of feel like it's summer, it's hot, and it's a new pool, and, you know, we, it's kid time. Um, we're, we're putting adults in there whenever we can, and we do three times a week early in the morning, uh, Sunday morning and tonight and Monday evening, um, for adult swim. But when the dome goes on and kids are in school, there'll be a lot more time. People could, adults could pretty much swim, you know, we could put a lane line in almost any time for them. So, it'll be a, you know, it's kind of three months crazy kid time and nine months less crazy kid.
And staffing?
Great. Um, I, we had a few incidents this weekend, and it was, uh, I, before coming here, I was reading my emails. I got three emails from people who, um, were just complimenting both day camp and, and aquatic staff. They're just, they're outstanding, and, um, and we're lucky in that we can train our own staff. Like, we're not depending on someone finding us already trained. Um, and then this winter, we're gonna do a lot of training, so, you know, we'll have some staff, a much smaller staff over the winter for lessons and things like that. But, um, we'll also be offering training for, to train lifeguards and train, um, swim instructors, but also to train trainers, so another community can send someone here, and they can be trained to go back to their community and train their lifeguards or swim instructors. And that's, um, that's a super, super high American Red Cross certification that Isaac has, that there are only, I think, three other people in the state that have it. So, it's, um, it's great, we're, we get, we can, we can train our own people.
Wonderful. Any other questions? Kelly, thanks for your time.
All right.
Nice to have you. Keep the money coming in.
It's my job, Tim.
All right, let's move to, uh, item number twelve, which is a municipal bond bank resolution, and that will be Tom handing us.
Oh, thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thank you. So, this is a secret finding that, um, me to do and authorize the mayor and treasurer to sign. Uh, this is for the TIP bond vote that happened in March. Um, pre-both the documents that most of you have seen before. Um, Bond Bank accepts to sell the bonds around the end of this month, and talking to, uh, Michael Gong, their director, the rates that we're seeing today are still really good, consistent with what we've seen in the last four or five years. Uh, but its level of anxiety is increasing given the economic uncertainty. Um, so maybe that general rating increases in the market, um, don't have a big impact since we'll be through the TIP soon enough. No questions?
Motion to approve the bond bank resolution and documents for five hundred thousand. Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Mike for the, uh, bond bank resolution specific to, uh, one hundred one-twenty Federal Street. Anyone have any questions with Tom? Carrying on, all those in favor of the approval of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Carrying on, the, uh, resolution is approved with first signature. You want to share that with us, Tom?
Uh, yeah. Okay.
Well, I got to talk. All right, um, and the loan amendment for the water tank.
Uh, yeah, so the, um, council approved the initial, uh, loan document, two-point-three million, which was voted authorization. Uh, the bids came in at two-point-six, and we're, we were in line for loan forgiveness. Um, but just in case you want to maximize what we can borrow through here, and since the bids are higher and the loan forgiveness isn't guaranteed yet, uh, we're asking for authorization to go another seventy-five, which is permitted, um, under state statute, without going back to the voters, you can, the council alone can do an initial seventy-five thousand. Um, so what we'll do that is seek a measure, uh, depending on how the loan forgiveness comes in. We may not need it.
What'd you say the bid came in at?
Two-point-six, right, Marty? And that's just for new title, it's not for transfer field?
It's not to transfer field. That will be down the road for us to discuss. Do you have any errands to hand, have you got that?
Can't be done until the one's in place and operating.
We'll reauthorize the loan amendment for all the civil water.
Second.
We have a motion for Chad, uh, seconded by Mike, to approve the, uh, authorization for the water tank construction. Anyone have any questions for Tom? Just, uh, just note that, uh, the price did increase from what we originally had estimated, but, so, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carrying on, uh, we approved, uh, the change.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Dom, I guess it's easier considering the mileage adjustment moving forward based on, uh, the level of gas prices? You want to touch on that a little bit?
Pretty much, yeah. Um, three staff members have received stipends for violations for driving a city vehicle. Uh, myself, Marty, and Kelly, uh, and we're asking to increase the, uh, stipend by a thousand dollars. Uh, it's been fixed at its current levels for about five years.
Anyone have any questions for Dom?
Is this temporary or while the gas is high, or do we take a look at it when gas goes back down, whatever does, or what do we do? Or is it just, it's time to increase it because it's been ten years?
It's kind of all a big buck, yeah. I mean, I, you know, I think it's, the sign is increased, which, right now, the CPI is, you know, it's coming, right? So, you know, certainly find an amendment motion to, um, you know, relook at it, you know, twelve months, eighteen months, but, um.
Would you guess necessary, or? We, we can take a look at it during the regular budget.
We can take a look at it anytime you want, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just remind us, okay?
Sure.
Motion to approve the employee salary adjustment for staff mileage.
Second.
We have a motion second. I, I'd like to amend the motion and include, uh, the mayor and the council as well.
Just, let's just do a percentage for us.
Right, to double the existing amounts.
Actually, we appreciate it, Mary, if you would do last round.
Actually, we appreciate it, Mary, if you would do last driving.
I've been gone, Marty, I got you.
We're not paying for that trip out west, are we?
No, not yet. They got me out of town. All right, we have a motion in a second to adjust the mileage reimbursement. Any questions and comments? Carrying on, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition? Carrying on, motion passes.
Stoppers will go a lot farther if you guys start driving electric, just so.
I would share, I'm not, this is going to come across like I'm against electric, but one of our stops, we're at Montreuil up in, uh, Montreuil and up in Canada. And our waiter, so Montreuil had a bad windstorm and they lost power for six days. Ski area lost it for two, but all the residents lost it for six days. And our waiter was the only one in his neighborhood who had a gas vehicle. And the residents did not have a generator of any sort. So he was chauffeuring to the grocery store, to the doctors, he was doing all the chauffeuring for the, because the electric vehicles were.
By the end of the six days, he paid for his car?
Yes, right. They were unoperable. So if you have an electric car, you get a generator.
That, that does seem like an extreme marginal case, but.
We had the ice storm too, you know?
Hey, man, I got sold or something.
Okay, moving on to mayor's report. Marty, tree time will be in the fall. Do we certainly, we want to start taking, recommend, or?
If you have, yeah. Planting.
And how about, it seems to me, and maybe it's the same every year, but I just think this, but it seems like there's a lot of trees dying. And I, I seem to take note of it. I don't know if it's worse than any other year.
We've got, yeah, we were cutting three down this week that are dead, but we're actually lower than they won't be normally at this point.
Yeah, you cut one today, two today, right in our block.
Um, yeah, on our down.
I think there's, uh, an area, I think there's at least three or four upon Messenger that are.
Yeah.
One, one on the corner of, uh, right in that intersection of Upper Newton and Messenger. I think there's three that could, might get another year out of them, but after that it will be, it seems to be a lot for whatever reason.
Is there any kind of a tree disease going around?
I don't know, but I think there's a variety of different trees that are.
I remember I used to have elm dudge tree disease that cleaned it pretty well up.
What was it, what were yours?
I'm not sure. They were funny trees. I don't know if they were locusts or.
Emerald last words now?
Right.
Emerald last words. I'm sorry, seeing our ashtrays.
On the near sidewalk projects?
What's that?
On the near sidewalk projects?
And they all, they all were at one point or another. Another day goes by because everyone hears me say this every, um, people make a point of reaching out to me and telling me how great the city looks, the flowers, the signage, the, everything associated with the downtown. I just, I think our downtown traffic, I'll call it tourism, has, has risen significantly, obviously, in COVID. But I still think even when you have the good years pre-COVID, I think our traffic, if you went downtown on Saturday, you have, you had the sidewalk sales, you had farmer's market, you had music at the farmer's market. This weekend you got the car show. Yes, I think there's a lot of activity and when I do run into people, they really are appreciative of the way the city looks. So kudos to Marty, you're with your team and Kelly, um, Kelly and Keith Wakefield for their work on the farm. But speaking of dead trees, I think we still have three or four on Main Street. Do you plan for those?
We're keeping an eye on several on Main Street that might have to be taken out. And we've actually grabbed, and Kelly and Keith watered all the trees this year for the first time to see if that helps. But we're, we're starting to think that it might not be a good, um, it might not be a good location for the, for the types of maples that we've been getting out of the nurseries. We think the maples are particularly hard hit by the salt, whereas others like the Japanese lilacs and the lindens are just doing fine. So it might be we gotta, we gotta hedge more on the salt tolerant trees for the downtown. When a tree dies in the downtown streets gate, we'll get rid of it and we'll put another one in it and keep trying to take care of it.
For me, um, salon and licks are welcome. Danforth Shoes moved into the shopping center, so welcome to them as well. Bootleggers has been up and running and I think soon Hangry Donut will be. Congratulations to Erica and the birth of their new child. So I think that's delayed a little bit, but, um, we, not just me, but many people are looking forward to the Hangry Donut for sure.
Have you poking your head in the window?
I have.
Yeah.
Yep. Pink and the floor is like a tech floor.
It's almost like.
Yeah, yes.
Tim, you're right, you're right. That's a good analogy.
Stick, Democrat, congratulations to girls, um, cross team. It was great to have a parade down Main Street that wasn't at 11:30 at night. So that works out well with the spring sports. So congrats to them. Track, Ethan Mashair and Logan Hughes setting state records in the track championship. So congrats to them as well. So I think that's pretty much what I had. Just so people know, I, I have always made an effort of delivering a bouquet of flowers from the city for those new stores that have opened, so we'll be doing that for all of those that we mentioned. If I miss any, let me know and I'll make the delivery. Want to go around, council, Tim, we'll start with you.
Okay, I'll reiterate, it's really nice walking downtown and seeing all the people out. And the, the sidewalk sales are where I, my wife took advantage of some of that stuff. A couple of things that I have, I think either, I think it's Marie. What is happening down on the corner of Cedar and Lake with what looks to be a forever runner sale? Is that your, is that your Bollywood?
Yeah, it would be.
Down there?
Yeah.
Or is that?
That's the one with all the tents on the corner, the old gas station?
No, no.
The one on the other side, the red and white building?
A long time ago, when I was young, it was a, it was a motorcycle and boat repair shop and then they became a residence. And now it's a.
Northwest corner of Cedar.
Yes, absolutely. And there's something going on there a lot and.
I wonder if they have a permit?
I'm, I'm wondering that myself, but I mean, it's a lot all the time.
Did you get a permit, Marty?
It's like a permit store.
It's not hers, it's not hers.
It's like a permit, a permit, a law, I said. Anyway, I just thought I'd let you know, Chip, Marty, Dominic, okay? Uh, the other thing that to me is more concerning is the bottom of Lake Street. If you were to go down, and I don't know what number it is, the building's owned by Keith. And for disclosure, everyone knows here that I do stuff for Keith. But that building's owned by Keith and it's had a huge broken glass in it for over a week now. Like someone threw a rock through it and there's people sitting out front there. That glass is broken. I could go down there and put some, a laptop through that hole and it, it wouldn't touch any glass. That's how big the hole is.
You're not talking about the Jiro building?
No, I'm talking about the old Champlain Monument building.
At the bottom, Keith?
At the bottom, Keith. I spoiled that, I, I, I'm sorry, I meant, I meant, I meant, Keith. So that is dangerous. That is very dangerous. I called the city last week and talked to Kristen and she told me that she was going to talk to Marty.
He's been sent a letter of violation.
Yep, I saw that from Mac.
Yeah.
But still, as of a couple of hours ago, it's, it's still there. And I think that, um, the track record with that and the Jiro building and a couple of other buildings that I wouldn't mind with Tim or someone sitting down with Keith and saying, what's up? You know, what's going on? I would be willing to do that. But I think that some of those, you know, number one, the Jiro building is, is not being operated in a way that we will, had set out an ordinance to take care of those buildings. We're supposed to have screening in front. That was important. It was opaque in nature and you weren't able to see into the building if it was empty and vacant. And that building's been empty and vacant all the time. It's in a major part of the city of St. Albans and it looks terrible. I know he's had some hard luck on that building. Some trucks have hit it. The sign's now on Catherine Street, so no other big trucks will turn down there, but they do anyway. But I, I think he's happy about that. But some of the buildings that he has, I don't know if he needs our help or what the issue is, but we need to, we need to help him as a city. Okay, so, and I'm willing to, I'm willing to participate in that.
I would, I would join you on that.
If everyone else, if someone else wants to do that. The other thing I had is I noticed there is now graffiti again on the Weldon door, uh, Weldon Building door going out Hudson Street. It was painted gray. I think the city went and painted that, didn't they, Marty?
Yeah.
And they've, they posted it, they plastered it again. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. And my last thing is, and I wanted to tread lightly on this one because I'm really in favor of the downtown storefronts or the downtown businesses using the storefronts and the sidewalks. And I'm just worried if we have any rules regarding the reach of, of a particular store and how far that store is allowed to go. I thought, Marty, I may have saw, may have seen you and another city employee taking some measurements one day on the sidewalk over by either Nourish or Twigs maybe? Or over, no, you know where it was, Marty? It was over by Nemos. I saw you.
Yeah.
And I didn't know if that's what you were doing, but, and I think that's a good idea because I think sometimes some of that utilization is preventing people from navigating the, that side of Main Street sidewalk. And I certainly don't want to discourage it because I, I love to see it. I mean, it's wonderful to go by Twigs and see, you know, all those people out there enjoying the afternoon. And the same, and the same thing with Nourish. It's more noticeable with Nourish because they're on that corner street and you can see that stuff that he has out there. And he's now moving around the corner, which is fine with me. I have no problem doing it. But I'm just wondering, what's the reach of that?
He's got at least 48 inches to navigate. So we've had conversations with all of them, but.
Yeah. I thought that's what you were doing out there and I'd say, yeah, that must be, you were out there with another employee taking some measurements. But I just want to be careful of that. People are excited about it. People want to be outdoors and like, but people still have to be able to walk those, those sidewalks.
There's a balance, you do it. So all of the use of the sidewalks is by permission. And each one of them is sort of laid out in sort of concert with the surrounding property owners. And we, you know, it's sort of like I am, when an engineer comes out and does a best fit sector design, right? And work around what's there, right? And there's some minimums that you need to have, like the 48 inches. But we, and the facts are different depending on who the surrounding businesses are. Sometimes the business next door loves the idea and wants to have tables out there. So what looks like an encroachment sometimes is very well.
Very beneficial, yeah.
Right? And so we have all of those conversations and try to find the best fit. Everybody that's there knows that they're there by permission of the city. You know, there's no grandfather, there's no rights that we're creating. They're there without permission so long as they continue to operate with the parameters that, that we lay out. And we've, we stray away from trying to enact a policy or regulations or program on it because they're so different and we don't necessarily want to create the right of Twigs Restaurant to use the sidewalk. Right? Because 10 years from now, when that's a different business, right? So.
We have rights to that, yeah, I understand. And I, I think that we can handle it, although I don't want to have a heavy hand on it, but I want to just be, you know, wow, we're really, there's a lot going on.
Totally, yeah, we share that.
It's tough to, it's tough to get through.
Okay, anything else, Tim?
Nope.
Bob?
Uh, I know we're laying everything on Marty, we just want to encourage him and it's well hard work and sad to do these crosswalks up in, especially Ward 5. There's a certain couple of constituents that are always talking to me about we, we need the crosswalks painted up there. But in particular, if we're having the election here, the primary election of August 8th or 9th, I wonder if we could do this for crosswalks right in front of City Hall?
We're doing more crosswalks on Wednesday. It's going to rain tomorrow, so our plan is Wednesday, Thursday, the guys come in at 3:00 a.m.
Perfect.
To do them, so. With the six-man summer vacations, it's tough to.
I know. Thank you. Anything else, Bob?
No. Can I go back? I, he, Bob says he'll get the podcast, I'm like, I'll give up. Can I give a little bit of time to me? Marty, I noticed the other day that, is it Felipe that's doing the street sweeping?
Yep.
Yeah. He, uh, he was doing street sweeping at, I think, eight or nine o'clock in the morning, maybe, maybe a little later. And I said, how, how can this guy do this? There's cars all over the place. There, you know what I mean? People are already parking for the day. And I'm just wondering, do we not do that like at 5:00 in the morning? Because like when I go to the office, if I go to the office like at 6:00 or something, there's hardly anything on the street. And I said, wow, this would be a great time to be doing those, you know, those crosswalks.
He does. He'll do the commercial areas early, but it's tough in the residential because of the noise.
Yeah.
But yeah, he'll come in at 4:00 a.m. but starting now.
Marty?
Uh, wanted to thank Marty and his crew for responding the next morning after one of my neighbors came in and asked for the crosswalks across Congress Street coming off of Smith to be marked and to put that temporarily yield to pedestrians. It, it has really improved the safety of crossing up there for kids who are trying to get to Hard Egg. And, I mean, the next morning. I took a picture of that and posted it and people were just like so happy. So thank you. That was, the customer service is really, really appreciated. I've had a whole bunch of people visiting over the last few weeks and to echo what you said, Mr. Mayor, the, the way that people are impressed with what we've done here in the neighborhoods and in the downtown is, it makes me feel really good about the collective effort that everybody's made. There, there's definitely a lot of, a lot of love and a lot of kudos for the, just the feeling of what it's like to be in the city right now. Also just wanted to encourage people to go ahead and vote early. The ballots are already available now and you can either request a ballot emailed to you or you can go into the clerk's office during business hours and vote. Uh, and one other thing, I've been talking to Tom a little bit about some administrative tweets to the way we interact with Department of Taxes with the LOT. And I've got a bill draft requesting, so the lawyers at the State House are, you know, they're kind of bored in the summer when the legislators aren't there, so I got a real quick response. So should have something to look at the next few weeks.
Thanks, Mike. And you said you encourage people to vote early and often, right?
Yeah, early and often. You've got two chances in the next few months.
I just want to add a couple of things. Marty, I felt on the concerts, I know the weather hasn't always agreed with him, but I'm just curious, do people find them at 14th Street?
Yes, we've only had them one, we've only had three, but that we got moved over. We put signs up in the park saying it's been moved. Elgato food truck is coming every Wednesday too, so.
And then the other one, this was a reminder today as I was walking through the park. I saw another e-bike going through the park at, I mean, about the same speed as traffic on the, on the street. In talking to Josh over at the Bootleggers, he said some e-bikes would be adjusted. If you buy them online, they could be adjusted to go 35, 40 miles an hour. So I think we, we don't need to address it now, but I think if you want to put that on your to-do list, maybe look at that. Because there's no way an e-bike going 30, even 20 by 30 miles shouldn't be on the, shouldn't be on sidewalks.
But in downtown, there shouldn't be any bikes on the sidewalks.
Absolutely.
The, the catchline too of that is, you know, if you bring down your granddaughter, you know, you don't want to be in the road with a.
you don't want being in the road with a five-year-old on a bike, but, uh, you know, you, there's that...
There is some enforcement discretion, though.
Yeah, no, there is. The e-bike is the one that, uh, the speed is, continues to get higher and higher all the time.
Chad? No, you don't want me to go last?
No, you won't.
I have a few things. So I want to talk about, and I forgot to talk about it last month, because so much was going on, but, uh, green belt parking and the mowing ordinance. So I was under the assumption people got warnings before they started getting tickets. So an example, a family had one of their kids visit, who live out of state, live up on Marty, Smith, Smith Street, and they don't have a side yard. So, and there, there's no green belt, there's no sidewalks, so they parked their car in front of their house on the, on the grass and got a ticket. So, it, it just, this shouldn't be like a money revenue generating thing for the city. So their lawn is kept immaculate. I don't see why they're getting a, a ticket for parking in front of their house while their kids visiting them. So I wanted to, to bring that up, and same with the mowing in May. So a lot of people do not mow for a little bit in May because of bees, and they're just coming out and they're looking for food, and so the clovers are starting to blossom, and the dandelions, and it appears we've been, we were taking people in May for not mowing their lawn. Now, I get it if it's a deer-like property, but if the property's fairly well-kept and they're not mowing their lawn for a few weeks, I don't know why we're bugging them, especially giving them a ticket without a warning, like knocking on the door and saying, "Hey, this is what's going on, and we'd like you to mow."
Point was, Dick, and we've had a lot of conversations about mowing and no-mow May, and, um, not to say there hasn't been folks who were inadvertently cut in that. Um, there's been an awful lot of other people, uh, who, um, found it inspirational, and May went so well, I'm gonna go right into June. And, you know, I got a whole email thread about, uh, you know, the, uh, we've, we've got emails flooding in from one neigh, from all the neighbors, and the guy is flying his biodiversity flag as his defense, right? So, um, I get it, we're trying to navigate that and trying to find a pragmatic solution.
Yeah, I think what we're starting to see is a, a culture shift a little bit away from the well-manicured lawn into something that's more reminiscent of kind of nature. So I think we're gonna start seeing that, and it's not gonna be something that in the next ten or fifteen years we're probably gonna have to deal with.
Yeah, I, it's, we were just driving around the other day looking at these, right? And, you know, there was one that we all said, you know, "That's, that's ridiculous, that's, um, you know, he's, uh, it's completely unkept," right? Uh, and, um, and another one, a couple of blocks over, that was very reminiscent of nature. But, you know, there's a difference between a garden and a wilderness, right? And even if you're gonna have a restored natural area in your front yard, it still needs some care and maintenance, you know, it's like...
I just think we're gonna start seeing more of that. I hope it's well-cared and maintained for, and it's not just a total mess, but I think what we're starting to see is, that's more of a shift now.
I hear ya, and we welcome, you know, some sharing of those stories, you know, that will help us find the right balance, you know? You know, we're not anti-beards, but just trim that there, right? And that's kind of the approach that we're taking, uh, on some of these, maybe we haven't found the right balance.
Yeah. So I just wanted to, I just want to reiterate, this isn't some kind of money-making scheme for the city. And I'd really like to see more and more, a warning, or at least stop knocking on the door and just say, "Hey, this is the ordinance that, that you may be breaking, and this is how we can get around it."
None, and none of the, none of the drivers are revenue. In fact, we'd be happy to pay people if that was the issue. We take funds that we've accumulated, and if somebody doesn't, can't afford it, we'd be happy to provide a grant to bring their lawn in line.
I don't think it's not, they can't afford it, I think it's a, "What the hell's going on?", I didn't know this was a thing.
Yeah, okay.
Marty?
So, um, we do give warnings, and typically if there's a green belt violation, Steve will knock on the door and talk to the people, and he's done it numerous times to the same individuals, and after half a dozen times, we start giving you a ticket. Um, as far as with Mons, the same thing. Matt sends out a warning letter saying, "This is the ordinance, this is the situation. Please take care of it, if it doesn't happen," and then they'll send out a fine. Um, but I was gonna say, as everybody remarks on how beautiful our community looks, one of the reasons is, is because of our PHSO. When somebody puts a mattress out on their front lawn for somebody to take, and it's rained on them for three days, you know, we knock on their door and say, "You gotta take the mattress, nobody's gonna come and pick up that mattress." We picked one up on Spruce Street last week that was there for about a week. Uh, and it's happening, unfortunately, more and more, but I think the diligence of the PHSO team contributes to the finally discovering the beauty of it.
Well, the person that reached out to me had no idea they just got a ticket. So no one contacted them, they don't contact them at all.
Yeah, they should have gotten one, knocked it out.
I'm happy to share the name after, if you'd like.
Couple more, Ken, before... Marty, can you make a mental note? Um, mine's a little high right now, but my mower is being repaired.
Is that a lighted mower?
I'm hoping I get it back this week.
You want, you want more of mine?
One of those rotary mowers?
Gas, gas mower.
You have a weed liker?
Oh, good idea.
High and low.
And, and, and that's the challenge we have, is there's some neighbors that do a beautiful job on their lawn, while others don't, and we get the phone call from the neighbor that does and says, you know, "This is deteriorating the value of my property, my neighborhood," so...
Um, facade grants, I'm glad we talked about it tonight. Is there any way we, or maybe we already have, reach out to the Drake and Main Squeeze to talk about their facades?
We're talking to the Main Squeeze.
Okay.
They have a lot of issues.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
What's up?
I just, the, the, there's a whole bunch of really nice storefronts and then that really deteriorates fast, right there, those two stores, you know?
Main Squeeze will look at some awnings, right?
Yeah, they got, they got the awning, which we helped to pay for.
Yeah, they did.
But there's a lot of deferred magnets on the...
Building, which is, it's common, I think it's common to be, it may be part of an association.
Yeah, that building's been condoized.
Yeah. Um, there are four cars in the north end of Holton Park, uh, that park there pretty consistently. None of them have a parking permit in the window. Uh, one was a little purple Scion XB, and then there's three others that are there. That tenant has been evicted and no longer lives at that location. So those cars have been there now for a week, and I don't know what's going on with them.
So, just so I'm sure, you want them parking on the green belt, but you don't want them parking in the parking lot?
No, I don't want them cars there at all.
We can let, I'll have Steve look at it.
Especially since the landlord says, "I don't know why they park in the road," because they have parking in the driveway.
So...
Um, and then lastly, I just want to mention that, uh, several people received, uh, some antisemitism flyers in a little bag and were thrown on their front lawn. Well, that may be that person's right to free speech. I would love to have a conversation with them, so, um, whether they want to come in here and discuss with us, or they want to give me a jingle at home, I would really love to discuss. So if they want to exercise their right to free speech, exercise it to me, please. So, that was it. Sorry it took so long.
Just think that I shouldn't have had to go last. Yeah, and I, to, to Chad's last point, is that something, um, do we know if the B.I. committee is having that conversation?
I don't know if they're having that conversation. We had, as long as the department had any...
You did?
Uh, we don't, uh, um, we're reserving some of them, there's some, you know, some data that we shared about, you know, sort of what's going on statewide, you know? It's a tough thing to figure out, do you inadvertently, um, highlight it by talking about it? Or, you know, do you talk about it and try to figure out the strategy around it? Chad's petition to engage in competition is a great one. You know, the, the intel that we have is, it's, it's not, it's not St. Alans initiative. It's for others, folks that live in other communities that are taking advantage of the fact that we're the shutter town of the county, and if you want to get noticed in fact in county, give it here. But nothing indicated that it's on the run.
Move to Marie.
Uh, I got a couple of things. Um, truck traffic on North Elm, mostly coming from, um, coming over Pearl Street. They go to turn right onto North Elm Street, they're traveling east. And they frequently have to go on the green belt because they're such a big truck. So they have to go on the green belt on the, on the east side of Elm Street. So that's a continuing problem. Um, also, we had a situation a couple of weeks ago where we had a Vermont Gas Company, um, truck that was running cameras down to check the gas lines, apparently, and he was there quite a while. There was a car that was, was parked not terribly far from the fire hydrant. The Vermont Gas truck was on the wrong side of the road, facing north, and a tractor-trailer truck from Pearl Street came down the street, and he couldn't, he couldn't get by. So those guys would have taken a while to get their equipment out of the ground and so on and so forth. So we had to call the police and have them come down. They ticketed the car that had been repeatedly parked there, um, and, um, they backed the tractor-trailer back down to the corner of Pearl. So I'm wondering if we can, I, I think at one time we had established maybe a truck route to go right down Pearl and around the curve by the railroad tracks?
On?
Yeah, on the pine. And, but I don't believe there's any signage there indicating that. And the fact that there's so much truck traffic that goes down Pearl to, um, the, um, the old mill down there and so forth, I think it really needs to be addressed and signed somehow. So I was wondering if we might want to consider that at some time or another.
Are truck routes on our annual goals? I think that was one of the things we had on our goal session.
It's come before in the past, yeah.
So, that's, that's kind of, um, that, you get those big trucks, and there are some long ones that go by the house. I mean, they're, they're huge and, um, all hours of the day and night, and that, I don't see how they make those corners. The same if they come over Elm Street and they go to turn up Lake Street. That's a big vehicle to get around that corner.
Marie, are they all headed south, or do they go coming from Lake as well?
Uh, both ways, yeah.
They go by my house quite frequently, box trucks.
Yeah.
GPS is...
Yep.
Yes.
We had one stuck here on Hudson the other day for about an hour. He tried to go down there with a tractor-trailer and hit both sides of the...
Yeah, the driver said, said that, too. He said his GPS had sent him that way over Elm, so...
Keep in mind that we've already got two trucks stuck in the notch, but...
Yes.
Say, "Look at all that signage."
It's like multiple flashing signs of...
Yeah, I know.
Twenty-five-hundred-dollar fine.
Yeah.
Thirty-four hundred.
Thirty-four hundred-dollar fine. And also that it's obvious you can't make it through, but they keep going anyway, so... I mean, um, yeah, you can look at it, but they're gonna, they still travel on Weldon, it's less. You, you can, you can make a dent in it by providing more direction, but there's always gonna be one or two that's gonna...
The town's gotten a number of complaints about trucks on Mason Street, too, coming down to exit, either exiting the industrial fire court and entering the industrial fire court.
Yeah.
And the only other thing I have is, um, uh, the crosswalks in the, uh, not the crosswalks, but the signage that's painted on the pavement in the shopping center up here, is that done by Pomerlo? Or is that the city that does that?
Pomerlo.
That's gotta be redone, too. I mean, they've got all those stops there, you can't even hardly read them anymore. I don't know if anybody pays attention to it.
Is there any way on that, um, that they could put a sign as you're coming up on, on the building that shows a stop sign where you're gonna stop?
They, they do have one, like in front of, um...
At Walgreen's?
Yeah. There's a stop sign there.
There are a couple, they're, they're attached to the pillars on the sidewalks.
Oh, okay.
Fair point. If you're headed north, there's one on the pillar, but not if you're headed east, there's nothing to tell you to stop.
Right.
Do you think there should be something?
Yeah, you saw your Pomerlo contact, right?
Yeah, yeah, we've got a good contact with them, they're pretty responsive when we reach out, so...
Because you gotta come up and you gotta watch right and left, any traffic's coming.
And you're the one coming from right, that's the one.
Right, yeah.
Correct. What are, what are they digging up, the...
Their privacy, we're like, cutting out their new store from the beginning.
Marie, anything else?
Nope, that's all I have. Yeah, almost as long as I have.
No. I've been observing the stop sign at, off in Federal and Newton Road, and it seems to be working okay. That's what I can see. Somebody said about roundabout or something?
Roundabout's being discussed for the, um, on-ramp for the interstate eighty-nine, exit ninety-nine.
One of four in the state access highway.
Who comes up with bright ideas like that?
Legislature.
No, actually, that is not, that is not a legislature.
It's comments like those that are part of why we have the public input process and agencies...
Is it, is it right now, it's lights, that works fine?
It actually really doesn't work fine, though.
It gets backed up.
Yeah, it gets backed up, it's really dangerous.
That was a hundred yards on the interstate, trying to get off and dead stop.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I know people get really frustrated with roundabouts, but they keep the traffic flowing. That's the, that's why.
By the way, I advertise, I go to the Amtrak station, anybody coming in, come to St. Alans, I says, "Come around, go to the shop in downtown and everything like this." And nobody even charges you, you know?
Anything else?
That's it, I guess.
Tom, do you need, is all your paperwork consigned? Chip, all your paperwork consigned?
I think I have everything, thank you.
I did want, uh, to your point, uh, to send on a, a blank blank. We had, when we were out of town, we have a family, um, friends of ours from DC come up and use the house. They've been stayed for three days, and they had held after the weekend. They ended up staying for a week, um, because they love St. Alans City and town. Everything the county has on, so, we're definitely doing something right.
Someone commented to me that they wished that the, the yard in the house that they were staying at was as nice as the city.
Hey, Tim, Tim, I'll, I'll lease that John Deere to you.
And why don't you know if the mayor of the city knew that your house was the same bad shape?
Motion to approve warrants, certainly.
We have a motion to approve warrant?
Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Marie, uh, for six-thirty, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve regular meeting minutes, five, nine, twenty-two.
Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Marie to approve minutes from five, nine, twenty-two. I will, uh, excuse myself, but all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any amendments? Haring done, uh, minutes approved. Any other business for the, for the guard of the council?
Let's go, Gary.
We have a motion to adjourn for that, second by Mike, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, all you.